I'm going to call our August 2nd Board of Commissioners meeting to order. George, if you'd read us, lead us in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a public meeting, and minutes and video is being taken of the meeting today. Awards and recognitions. The Board of Commissioners has been supportive of our fair youth, both fair and 4-H and FFA. And usually, we try and read the recognition that those youths have sent us. We have just under, and I'll hold these up, just under 100 thank you cards from the Milton Free Water Junior Show kids. And so, we'd be here for a while if I tried reading all of those. So, I will acknowledge that these came from youth for the livestock sale. I'm sure that parents and 4-H leaders and FFA folks had asked that please recognize the county for the support we sent to those youths, so they could boost the price they got for animals. The Junior Show also sent this plaque in recognition to the Board of Commissioners for our support of the youth for that facility, or for that show. We do that for the Milton Free Water Junior Show, the Yum-Itilla County Fair, and the Pendleton Livestock, East Yuma, is it East Yum-Itilla?
Pendleton Livestock Show.
Pendleton Livestock Show. It's hard to keep all of them straight. So, again, we appreciate that greatly, and those kids have really appreciated it. As many of you know and understand, that goes toward, for a lot of students, that goes towards their future fund for schooling. And it's also a great learning experience getting some of them into, getting a little bit of background business. Okay, we do have a busy agenda this morning, so minutes, the next item, minutes from our previous meeting.
I did not get them done yet.
Okay, so we'll forego those. Do we have any additions to the agenda, Doug?
There has been one item that's been added. Right after the crusher purchase discussion, there will be some discussion on the fair roads.
Okay. Then, moving on, public input. Do we have anyone that wants to address the board from the public this morning? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right on to presentations. Do we have any specific presentations that are not already on the Board of Commissioners' agenda? Okay, let's jump into our meeting business item. We have the ambulance service area five staffing requirement waiver. Doug, thanks.
Okay, this is coming before the board from the ASA 5 franchise ambulance service franchise holder. Particularly, it's now the East Yum-Itilla County Ambulance Service Area Health District has, is requesting the continuance of a waiver that was granted to the East Yum-Itilla County Health District under the previous arrangement that the board approved back in 2013. And what this is done, doing is to request the waiver continue through the end of the franchise period for the new district.
Comments, questions?
And I believe someone's here from the district, if you have any questions.
Okay. If you want to come up and speak to that, identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Ross. I'm the acting administrator for the East Yum-Itilla County Ambulance Area Service District. And just to speak a little bit to what we're requesting, back in 2013, the Oregon Health Authority required that franchises that were using reduced staffing models in order to provide service to their areas, keep track of that information, and then report that information to the health authority. And basically, reduced staffing means if we have something less than two trained EMT basics or higher in the ambulance. This allows us to use a driver, for example, from another agency if we need to, and then have a paramedic in the back to be able to provide service to whatever patient we're providing care for. So, actually, what we're requesting, if I can modify the request a little bit, we would like to continue that reduced staffing model as long as we need to within the district. And so, if we're, if we're re-awarded the opportunity to continue as a franchise holder after the first of this year, we would like to continue with that reduced model, staffing model. We're, of course, a volunteer organization, so we rely on professionals within the area to, to provide our ambulance service, and this allows us to, to continue to do that.
And we've done that in the past.
Is this being brought about due to the shortage of EMTs? You're not able to have the same number on the ride?
Not necessarily. It's, I mean, in part, certainly, one problem that we have, being just an ambulance service provider, we're also not a fire provider, so with the fire services in East Yum-Itilla County are separate from our medical services. So, a lot of the firefighter paramedics that are out there that are trained are interested in working for agencies who are firefighter, fire and EMS services combined. Our situation being a volunteer, you know, we're relying on registered nurses, we're relying on physician assistants, people in the professional environment who are maintaining their skills outside of the EMS environment, and then willing to donate their time and come into our community and provide service on the ambulance as well. So, we have trained drivers that are more than willing to get them around, we just need a way to have those professionals work in the back of the ambulance as well.
You don't anticipate any negative effect on, on the transporting of patients? For the patient's welfare will still be, they'll still receive high-quality medical treatment while they're being transported?
Absolutely. That's, that's my first and foremost concern, is to make sure that that professional is available to provide the care in the back of the ambulance as they need to. This, this just gives us an opportunity to have somebody other than a medical professional who I'd rather have in the back with the patient drive the ambulance. If we need to have somebody from the fire district come and provide service for us, we can. We also have mutual aid agreements with all of our surrounding partners, so if we need to have somebody from Milton Free Water or from Pendleton intercept us en route, so that we can have additional staff in the back of the ambulance to take care of the patient, we can do that. And of course, we always rely heavily on Lifelight.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for East Yum-Itilla County Ambulance Service Area Health District to operate with reduced staffing, and instruct staff to better, to prepare a letter confirming approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, the next item, property bids. Hope you're patient, we've got quite a few here, so we're going to have to go through all of them.
There are 10 properties that are available for sale. And as usual, the county has, through the month of July, accepted written bids, and that's what's occurred. There were two that didn't say on the outside which ones they were for, so if you could open those, we can then put them with the other ones that are for that property.
That's for that Southwest Birch Pilot Rock.
Okay. Doug, do you want to announce who's open?
Yeah, okay, this one is for the, the first, first one up, anyway, it's for the Echo property.
This is Southwest Third.
Okay, so this is for, oh, the property in Reeds. So, the first one that's up for consideration is in the Echo area. It had a minimum bid of $65,000 at the auction, and so those are the bids that were submitted for those. And that piece of property. And the first one is the one you just opened.
Okay. I'm not sure how to pronounce Richard's last name, but Richard Walcik, Walcik?
Walcik.
Bid from Dale and Jerry Fife. The amount of $15,700. Wow, a lot of bids for that one. Bid from RJB Investments for $15,000, even. Put these there in the order of the amounts. You're like Johnny Carson Show, I need to go.
Your turban on.
My turban on. This is a bid from Kathy Zentner for $11,000. Let's see what was.
I need Paul's motor skills. The motor skills.
This is the same one. A bid from Lloyd Piercy for $41,510.
Okay, that's for a different piece of property.
Okay.
Let's double check.
I have one, two, three, four, five bids.
Okay, that is. Okay, okay. This one was on the left. Sorry, this was, okay, yes, this is the same one.
That's for the same property?
Yes.
$41,510.
And the minimum is?
The minimum would have been about $9,800.
Okay.
So, it looks like the high one is the $41,500 from Lloyd Piercy.
Where is this property located?
This is in the city of Echo. It is a house.
So, we need to act on?
Yes, if you want to, you can, on that one particular, if you want to go ahead and accept the bid from Lloyd Piercy for the $41,000, you can do so.
What was the appraisal on it?
$65,460 was the real market value.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the bid from Lloyd Piercy for the purchase of the legal description that's the Echo property, which is $41,510.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next property?
Okay, the next property is in the city of Hermiston. It is a house located on East Ridgeway, and there are a number of bids. This is the one you already opened. It had the wrong tax lot number on it, but it does have that one, so I believe that is for that property.
Okay, the bid is from Richard Walcik for $17,777.
And the minimum bid is?
It was $92,630.
Minimum bid?
That was the amount at the auction.
Basically, $14,000.
Thank you.
This is a bid from RJB Investments, $37,000. A bid from Ostrom Living Trust, Kim Ostrom, $14,401. A bid from David and Kathy Zentner, an amount of $15,000. A bid from, what's it called? Impunit, import?
Infinite, is it Infinite Designs?
And what was the minimum on this one?
$13,895.
$13,000, so we have a bid for $37,000, the high bid, from RJB Investments. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the bid?
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
How many do we have?
There are 10 total.
We're going to be here a while.
This one is in the Hermiston area, is located at the intersection of Baggett Lane and Alpine Drive. It's an unimproved 3.7 acre lot, and it was at the auction for $70,700, so that means you could go down to $10,605.
And we have three?
Three bids.
Three bids on that.
This bid is from Kim Ostrom, and the amount of $11,901. A bid from RJB Investments, $11,000. A bid from David and Kathy Zentner, $17,500. Those are the three? Just three on that one?
Yes.
Okay. So, the high bid would be?
Seventeen.
$17,500, but David N. and Kathy Zentner. And what was, again, the?
It's $70,000, $10,605 is the minimum.
I move we accept it. Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the bid of $17,500?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next one is a house in the city of Milton Free Water. The real market value is $78,360, so that means $11,754 is the one you can go down
Okay, we have a bid for $11,783 from Infinite Designs. A bid for $15,000 from RJB Investments.
And a bid for $17.
And a bid from John DeLonge for $17,000. What was the minimum on that one again?
$11,754.
Chairman, I move approval of the high bid, $17,000 from John DeLonge.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the bid of $17,000 from John DeLonge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next one, you have three bids on a house out in Riverside on Northeast End of Don.
Paul, you're keeping track of these, aren't you? Okay. Let us know if we need to. Because Doug, legally, don't have to accept.
Have to. Actually, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
A bid from Kim Ostrom, $7,001.
And the minimum was?
$6,600, so the highest one was from Zentner at $10,001. I don't know if you went to accept it, or?
What was the value on that?
$44,000. It's a very small house, I believe, like three-bedroom.
I would say yes.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Okay, move to accept the bid from David N. and Kathy Zentner, $10,001.
Been moved and seconded, we accept the bid of $10,001 from Zentner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next one is a very small parcel here in Pendleton with a real market value of $15,800. It's located down off Southeast 17th, I believe.
We just had two?
Two, just.
Bids for that?
This is a house?
No, it's just a very small, it's a portion of a vacated street.
Minimum?
It was $15,800 was the, so it's fairly low.
A bid of $250 from Dennis P. Doherty.
That doesn't even meet the minimum.
The minimum, that was the sales price, was $15,800.
Oh.
What was her bid?
$237.
Okay, so that does meet it barely.
I believe these are both adjoining owners that are bidding.
Okay.
A bid from David and Karen King for $240. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the bid by Dennis P. Doherty.
Second.
$250.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept the bid of $250 from Mr. Doherty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The next one, there's only one bid on it. It is one of the North Main lots in Pendleton.
Okay.
I can read body language. This is a bid from Kathy Zentner, $7,000.
This was at the auction for $46,350, so $6,952 would be the minimum, excuse me, so.
Move we accept it.
Do you think that that wouldn't necessarily have a higher value listing it out?
The, the ones on North Main, we had to go through two auctions to get them down to, on the last go-around, and this is, we sold them for less than this, the last go-around. They're not.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we accept the $7,000 bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, the other lot on North Main, there weren't any bids on it, so that will come back for another auction, or we'll keep it open for other ones. We're up to number eight. This one, the next one is the wreath, outside wreath. And it is 15 acres up on the hillside north of Wreath Road. And there might be two from one person.
Hmm. Let's see. What is it?
They have to be.
Somebody's staking that one. Jeez. Okay. Read from the back, those are the low ones in the back.
A bid from Fourth Ranches for $5,000. A bid from David and Kathy Zentner for $4,000. A bid from Lloyd Piercy for $3,610. A bid from John DeLonge for $3,500. Chairman, I'd move that we accept a bid of $5,000 from Fourth Ranches.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the $5,000 bid from Fourth Ranches. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the last one is property up in Ukiah. It was the business formerly known as Granny's.
What business was that?
The Rithman.
We have a bid from Carolyn Schock for $12,155. We have a bid from Patrick and Stephanie Picard for $10,000. I guess that's it.
And this one, the minimum you could go down to is $9,794.
And the high one was 12?
Yeah.
Okay. Chairman, will we accept a bid of $12,155 from Carolyn Schock on the property?
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the bid from Carolyn Schock for $12,000, what was it?
$12,155.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, is that the end of our?
That's the end of those.
All right.
It goes back on the tax rolls.
All right, thank you for, for that, Paul. Our next item of business is the linear crusher, Tom. And we're going to add our sheriff's, we add an addition on Airport Road, we're going to add this in with Tom after he's done this, so you guys can get back on duty. Tom, linear crusher.
Thank you. Tom Phillips, Public Works Director. We recently went out for requests for proposals for the rock crusher attachment for a loader. We received a proposal from Vanway, which is the company we'd been talking to, we demonstrated that machine. The machine cost is $369,220. The extra tooling that we had requested brought the total, plus delivery, brought the total of the machine to $409,781, and were plenty satisfied with that price. They, that's right in, right in where they, we expected it to be, so.
And we had to have this in no later than August 15th? Is that correct?
If we're, yeah, August 15th, the, the price goes up another $37,000, because that's what the, what the price increase from John Deere is for the new engines.
Okay.
But Doug, didn't you also say they only make one at a time?
They, they build one at a time, yeah. They, they have the capabilities of putting about six of these out of their, out of their facility a year, so, and, but I, I talked to Sid the other day, and he said, said, where we are on the list, we should have, if we, if we do this, we should have ours in 60 to 90 days, so.
I met with Tom after his presentation at the last meeting, and while I gulped at the prospect of spending $750,000, he convinced me, no, no, I'm saying what I'm saying. I thought it was. I'm saying what I'm saying. I thought it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, but he was, after his description, I became convinced it was a good purchase. So consequently, finding out it was four oh nine, I'm even more excited.
You scared me first.
No, no, no. I was saying what I was saying. Tom knows that.
When we had the conversation, he scared me because I thought maybe I missed something somewhere.
Brings it into bargain position, doesn't it?
So anyway, the road department's requesting that commissioners approve the purchase of this machine.
I would still move.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we move forward with purchasing the linear crusher. And I, when it was demonstrated, I did observe that when they had it here last spring.
Last, yeah, last fall.
Last fall. And it was a pretty impressive piece of equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if Jim and Terry and Tom had all come up to the podium, so we can kind of talk about, so everything's on a legal basis on what we're doing.
They're not going to handcuff me or anything.
One on either side.
As he grabs for the tissues.
Nor are they going to muzzle you.
So I guess I can start off by, we want to talk a little bit about the traffic safety plans going into this year's.
Would you let us know who the safety committee is?
Safety committee?
Yeah, that you talked to me about, and I want to be careful that we didn't have something like we had down in Arnie County.
So for the last couple of months, we've been working with the Fair Board, the Eotech Board, our emergency managers, and our staff. Particularly Sergeant Roberts from our Patrol Division has kind of been spearheading the, not only the traffic safety plans, but our plans overall at the facility during the events. And so if we want to talk a little bit about the traffic safety plans, it might be helpful if we can pull up a map of the facility from the Eotech website. Can you do that, so we can have it up? It'd be helpful for visuals.
You want to move this one up next?
So essentially, we're anticipating some traffic problems. We're planning for. We really don't know for sure until we are two or three days into the event about what level of traffic we're going to have. And particularly, we're concerned with what's going to occur at the end of the events, particularly after the rodeo gets out. And then after that, exiting people after the concerts every night.
And I think it's the first one.
Is there a plot map?
Yeah, there is one on their website, and that's not it. I think, try it.
Probably under the, try the facilities, cab.
And? Construction? No. Okay. Development, then. No, that's not it. They do. I found it.
I've seen it before and I just can't remember how to get to it.
Maybe some facilities.
Did you highlight development?
There we go. Click on it. Can you double click it and bring that image up?
We might just want to be grateful we have something.
So essentially, we're primarily concerned with Airport Road. And prior to the events, we're, have plans to put up temporary no parking, assigned to long Airport Road. We don't think that there's enough room to park and have vehicles safely travel down Airport Road because it's so narrow. And there's residences on each side, and so that's part of the plan. Also, we're planning on to temporarily reducing the speed limit on Airport Road to somewhere, I believe we decided on twenty-five in the area of the entrance and exit off Airport Road to the Eotech property. And currently now, there's, it's not marked for speed anywhere on that road. And so, under state law, it would be considered a fifty-five mile an hour zone, which we believe is way too fast for that area. So temporarily, we'll restrict the speed. All this is designed to, you know, eliminate crashes or pedestrian vehicle incidences. And so we want to do everything we can to try to mitigate those problems. So during.
Just a question. Fifty-five mile an hour zone, but where does basic rule come into that?
The basic rule can apply based on conditions, weather, daylight, all those things, so.
Congestion.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
So, so the speed limit wouldn't be fifty-five and it'd fall under basic rule?
It would be under, under ORS, but the basic rule could apply as well. So, for the events themselves, again, we don't know what kind of a traffic problem we may or may not have, particularly at the end of the events. So our plans now, and working with the Fair Board, they have an entry-exit point at the main entrance. And while we're talking about the main entrance, we have been receiving complaints at the main entrance. Vehicles exiting from the Eotech property, pulling out onto Airport, too far out into the road, and traffic that's coming west on Airport. There's been some near misses for collisions there. We think it's primarily because the visibility as you exit Eotech, looking to the left or to the east, is blocked by a bunch of trees and debris there on the corner of that property. We think if we cut those back, it would, it'd allow better visibility for people exiting from that main entrance.
Have you talked to Tom?
It'd be on the property owner next to it because the, we've got everything trimmed back to the right of the line.
Yeah. So I don't know what the solution is. Maybe working with the property owner to see if they'd be willing to cut some of that back, but that is a problem. If you exit from there next time to the left, you have to pull out almost onto the road before you can see down Airport to see if any traffic is coming.
Wasn't the owner of that property at an Eotech meeting?
Yes.
They talked about doing that trimming or having it done.
And you might remind him that if it isn't and there is a crash and it's because of his charity, that his, he's liable, so he may.
Now, they, they did come to an Eotech, two different feelings from that property owner that they didn't want to do anything with the trees because of hawks in the nesting or roosting in those trees. So we've had different conversations with them regarding that. So it might help if our sheriff's department approached them regarding the legal issues. And then Doug, I've talked to Doug and he's got some ideas as far as the legalities on how we can move forward in keeping our road department in the loop on all this and help with planning, too.
Okay.
I thought when we met, had our joint meeting, he was amenable to doing something.
He said he would.
We've had two different stories from.
Okay.
So getting back to the plan itself, so during the events, that will be the main entrance and exit up until about nine PM. After nine PM, there'll be an exit-only point at the southwest corner of the property onto Airport. And there will be no exit from the main entrance. And so that's designed to get people out of the facility as quickly as possible. Again, we don't know if people will, will all try to exit at once, or if they'll kind of trickle out over the course of the events. As we know, sometimes after the rodeo, some folks stick around. They don't leave immediately. They have other things they're doing there. And so we think that they may filter out gradually. After the concerts is probably when most people will be leaving because that's nearing the end of the, of the fair for the night.
Jim, did you say there are two exits onto Airport Road?
There will be one exit only at the southwest corner after nine PM. And that's at the southwest corner there. They've cut a new fence and gate.
So they won't come out the main entrance?
No. No, that'll be closed for exiting. And so.
The reason they did that, because of the parking, they're moving on down toward Airport Road with all the taped off flagging. And to have people go in off of the main entrance and park, using that for parking. And then when they leave, going clear to that far west side and going down along that fence.
Yes.
And going out.
Does make sense to.
We think it'll alleviate some of the confusion about where to exit if we have one only, so.
And I visited with Tom. Tom is aware of that exit. And even, I don't think we're doing anything with the gravel at that exit. I think. They're taking care of it, so. But they do, and they're working on a permit for that, so.
It's not any different than the old fairgrounds, is it?
The old fairgrounds had.
Had an entrance and an exit.
Yes, it did.
It had entrance and exit, exit at a couple of different points.
But you didn't, but you went down, had to go somewhere else to exit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, before it was entrance off of Orchard and then exit off of Seventh next to the school.
Right.
They actually came out through the Bruin Building parking lot as well. In fact, I think the school closed off that other exit to Seventh.
Well, it just isn't, it's not unusual to have a separate exit.
Yeah, no.
So if we run into a problem with traffic backing up, we'll filter them out of that southwest exit point. And we'll have everybody go to exit to the right for them. It'd be a right turn heading west onto three ninety-five. From there, we'll have people filter either right or left, depending on if they want to go north or south on three ninety-five. We think just letting the traffic flow as much as possible without having a bunch of stops is the most expedient way to get people out in the shortest amount of time and not having the roads blocked for any longer than we, we need to. But again, it all goes back to, we don't know how much of a traffic problem that will be. We'll just monitor it Tuesday, Wednesday night. Of course, we anticipate the most cars Friday, Saturday. So our personnel on staff will, on the site, will, will be able to monitor that and make adjustments.
Okay. Have you coordinated with ODOT on Airport, three ninety-five, and Otte?
We've had some conversations with them and they essentially said that they don't want to be involved and they won't be involved in the, in any of the plans. So we've kind of proceeded on our own.
But the traffic coming out of the parking lot, will it be directed only west?
Yes.
Toward, toward three ninety-five?
Yes.
Will that be with the use of cones, however, or some way?
We'll probably have some sort of barrier. We'll have officers out there directing traffic and directing people which way to go.
If there's a barrier out there, what, what does that do to eastbound, westbound traffic coming from Otte Road or one of the neighbors?
If there's westbound traffic, they'll have to stop until all the cars are cleared. We don't think it's, makes sense to stop a hundred cars to let one go by, so they'll just have to wait. And that, that, I think that's probably the most expedient way to get people out.
Will there be personnel there?
Pardon?
Will there be sheriff's office personnel at that spot?
There'll be sheriff's office personnel and personnel from other law enforcement agencies. As you know, in the past, we've always had great cooperation from all of our other law enforcement partners. So we anticipate that we'll have anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five law enforcement officers from various agencies as well as ours throughout the whole week. So we'll have plenty of personnel to help with that.
Terry, well, you talked about being short-staffed here some time ago, having some folks gone. How's this, are you going to get enough help from others so you have some backup?
You know, currently, we've, we're down, well, as of today, we're only down two positions.
Okay.
Due to retirement and resignation. One deputy moved into Wisconsin and the other deputy retiring. And so, you know, again, with the cooperation and collaboration with other agencies, getting more personnel there is going to be instrumental in providing that, that level of safety there that we have historically had. So I think we look forward to it every year, but it's always this unknown. And, you know, right now, it's much like we've, we've said, this is a new event, new location. We don't know if there's going to be a problem or not. We don't know if we'll experience a hundred cars trying to get out of there at once, or if it'll, if they'll just trickle out in and out throughout the evening. And one certainty is typically, you know, once the concert is over, is when we'll have, and/or the rodeo is over. That's when we see the, a higher level of people leaving the facilities. And so we do know that for certain from experience at the old facilities, but.
Right.
We still don't know for sure what that's going to look like.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
The rodeo arena, the participants, I would expect the traffic to be a lot less, but they have an exit over to Otte Road that'll still be there?
Yes, that's still there. And so in talking with the rodeo board, of course, we're expecting to have some citizen complaints from people in the area because, as you know, in the rodeo, they're going to have large trucks, semis hauling cattle down Otte Road, which is a dirt road. And that's going to kick up a lot of dirt and dust. And we're, the rodeo directors are developing a plan to guide people into the facility, particularly contestants and stock contractors. They're probably, will place signage on three ninety-five, probably at Otte to try to direct those large vehicles down Otte directly to the facility versus having them come down Airport and trying to make a left turn in that very tight intersection at Airport and Otte. And so that's, that's part of their plans as well, and they're developing signage. I don't know what that's going to look like yet. But there will be a lot of large vehicles coming down Otte Road.
Okay.
I believe that the Eotech Board has taken some measures to alleviate it to some extent with.
They, they had.
Dust suppression and so on.
They're doing the dust suppression on Otte Road. They've talked about, the rodeo board has talked about, and I haven't attended their meetings formally, but they've talked about having people exit and go, is it north?
North.
On Otte Road over to East Highland. I'm not sure what kind of an issue that could create, but again, dealing with dust because that dust suppression does not go the full length of, or won't go the full length of Eotech grounds. And the other question I had was, so that we, if we have a, if you guys have to do citations or tow a vehicle because of being parked illegally, Doug, can you explain what we need to do as far as policy and ordinance so that we're not liable if somebody says, you damaged our vehicle, you didn't have authority, this sort of thing?
Well, the Board of Commissioners, under its authority for county, over county road jurisdiction, could implement the temporary reduction in the speed and as well as issuance of the no parking area for purposes. And then you might also want to delegate your authority to the sheriff and the road department to implement your designations.
Would that incorporate the diversion, traffic diversion as well?
Yes.
Okay. How about the road department and liability and they're getting, they get questions?
That it's, it's then under the Board of Commissioners' authority.
Okay.
Is that what a motion should read?
Yes.
Yep.
Get that, Melinda?
I would so move.
I already did.
Oh, did you? Okay.
So any?
I'm with you. Second.
Any comments or questions, Tom, Terry, Jim?
I guess I do have one. You know, of course, this is the first year and a lot of things could happen. But I'm just wondering if the Eotech has future plans of actually paving Otte Road from three ninety-five to paving and widening.
I'm going to let Tom address that.
Well, yeah. Yeah, as soon as the governor signs the transportation package, there is money in there for the paving of Airport Road and for at least a portion of Otte Road. I don't know exactly how that's worded, so I can't tell you right here. I, the other thing is, is I don't know when that is. thing is, is I don't know when that is programmed for. In other words, I don't know what the, what year that is. It's a seven-year package. My understanding is it's pretty, pretty near the front of the projects, of the earmarks, but I don't know exactly where that's going to stand. So, so yeah, there is money in that. One of the questions I've got is, what is EOTC's responsibility for doing some of these things? Because there's a cost associated with every bit of this, and I, I was always under the impression as part of the planning process and the permitting process that they were supposed to pony up for the majority of these types of special events. So what's, what's with that?
The agreement was they would do that. However, there seems to be an issue about, oh, wait a minute, this is county road, so. So we're still working on their responsibility at doing some of these, because it's not just fair and rodeo. It will be other events in the coming year and years, and there'll be numerous, or we hope there's going to be numerous events. So there's going to have to be a cost there that they bear also.
I go back, though, to what, I can't remember who was the under sheriff, or the sheriff said, that we may, we may in fact find ourselves being over-prepared, but I'd far rather see us over-prepared than under-prepared. And this is an experiment, or a pilot, so to speak. I mean, we'll get, we'll be better able to make these decisions on what we need to do and what EOTC needs to do after we've actually done it.
And my understanding, Tom, is that we're already gathering data as far as the traffic frequency and speeds?
Yeah, that was the other thing.
I'm going to work on, on that. I'm not sure how, we're kind of like the sheriff's department. We don't know what to expect, so we're not really sure how the, how, how well our data collection is going to go, but we're going to make some attempts at it.
Tom had talked to me about putting.
On Airport and, and Ott both, but I, we have some questions about whether or not we're going to be checking the right locations, you know. We're going to, we're going to wind up with a lot of data with just how useful it is.
Well, it'll be usable.
What, now, the road department has none, no no parking signs. We have never have, never have had a need for them. So any thought to where that's going to come from?
Yeah, we've made arrangements with the city of Pendleton to borrow some from them. We'll be picking them up on Friday. Jeff Brown from the city has been really great to work with and has offered up whatever they have that we could use.
Well, that won't be an expense to us.
The other question, I know that months ago, sitting down, going over the plans, it would appear that there, there may be a future plan of actually extending a road on the north side of the facilities out, back out to 395, particularly for emergency vehicle response. And I don't know if you've heard anything about that.
For doing what, again, Terry?
Extending a road that will be north of the facility, sort of in between the airport and, and the facilities, that extends out to 395.
Or out to Ott Road and then to 395?
I'm not sure if it goes back to Ott Road, but.
I haven't heard of that. And I don't, there's a piece of ground that I think, whoever owns that to the. To the northwest.
What's the airport angles?
Well, I think it abuts the airport property, this piece of ground. I think they're talking about trying to sell that, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I go back to something Tom said about, we thought EOTC was going to take responsibility. This is not a conversation we've had for the first time. We thought EOTC was going to do this, but in the end, this is the Umatella County Fair, and I think at least the first go-round is, is on us as Umatella County, because I don't think there's anybody in Umatella County that thinks this is the EOTC Fair. So we're, we've sucked it up on a regular basis.
I also understand that this, this is not the only event, and, and if the county's going to be responsible for every event, then that's a different conversation than the county fair.
I'm, I'm, that's why I made the comment. This is the Umatella County Fair, and I think we have to keep remembering that in these conversations. The next big event probably isn't going to be a Umatella County event.
What I would ask, knowing this is going to go forward, and we'll be doing, or somebody will be, and it'll probably be us, county and you guys, work for the future anyway. I know, Tom, you're swamped, and you guys are swamped too, but kind of sit down together and be thinking about some future issues on how we can address some of these things, because we're going to have to. We don't know when we'll get the money for the, for the roads, how that's going to be impacted. We don't know when the governor will sign the money bill, when, or if parts of that, it's set up so parts and pieces can be pulled and put on a referendum for the public having to do with taxes. There's a lot of unknowns, so. And so we don't have our departments, whether Chair for Roads or, or whoever, or the county, the board, keep our liability down. So going back to that, again, if you guys can work together and keep me in the loop as liaison to.
Certainly.
Keep me in the loop as liaison to.
We'll, we'll do everything we can to step up and, and take responsibility for anything that we need to. We're certainly concerned. We want to maintain safety and security.
Right.
And we'll do whatever we need to do that. The plans, although they're in place, they're not set in stone. And so every day, our personnel will be briefing, and they'll make adjustments to plans as needed. And then certainly after the events are over, you know, in the coming weeks, we'll, we'll probably have after-action briefings and, and talk about what we did well and what we could improve on. And so that's all part of the evolution of plans at the new facility.
It will be a change in progress and a, a event in progress all, all the time. And Tom, you're not immune to this deal, so.
I'm calling for a scope out for those that have been.
No, so.
I think it'd be incumbent on you, Larry, though, to convey to the EOTC board that our response is based on the fact this is the county fair.
Yes.
And not to anticipate this will be extended to them.
And the, the other members of the EOTC board that are also board members for the fair have been down there almost 24/7. I've got to give all those guys kudos. They have worked and worked and worked to do that.
Well, you need to know my vote is contingent on the fact you're going to paint the safety building crimson and gray to match the barns. So that needs to happen soon.
So, Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate to move to accept the reports from our Public Works Department and Sheriff's Department and approve of what we've heard?
We have a motion on the floor.
We did?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Where was I?
You seconded it. No, he seconded it.
Seconded the motion. It was.
That was just a delegation of authority. Then you might approve the plan.
And then you'll put together a, can you put together a, an order for that, or do we need?
I don't think we need it written at this point.
We don't need an order. So is that going to work out for you guys? I just want to be sure that when you tow somebody's car, we've got some backup, or whatever happens.
What does Melinda have?
Um, policy, order, authority. Or authority over county road jurisdictions can implement a further reduction in speed as motivation in the parking area for their purposes, and may delegate authority to the sheriff's office and road department to react to policy as set forth.
And divert traffic? Was that all what we had?
Okay, we, we have a motion second. Any comments, questions?
Does that need to be specific to the county fair, or is that wide open to?
No, no, this is for.
This event.
This is for this event. Is that in there?
Well, the maker of the motion has been insisting it's at county fair.
We just got through with a week of doing friendly amendments at NACO.
While she's looking, Sheriff, you might notice that you're Mr. August on the county calendar, so. Up there.
I didn't even know we had a calendar, county calendar.
Oh, yeah.
So we got it for the event of the county fair. Other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. One, now that we've done this, one issue I've got some concerns about is why I hope we're okay with ODOT, because they, they're kind of out there on their own, and they don't.
Well, they were trying, they tried bringing them into the pool back months ago, early planning phases. They just weren't interested in, and it wasn't just our office, it was the office and the media as well, you know, asking if they would help participate in, you know, some of this traffic diversion. Really no explanation as to why either.
And as long as we're talking about this, I would, I would anticipate that the data that we are able to gather be both visual and, and by counters, that I expect we're probably going to need it in the near future to address a speed reduction on Airport Road, period, permanently.
I would think so, yes.
And so we need to be aware of and, of the negotiation that needs to occur with ODOT since they have control of that.
We can certainly reach out to them again and maybe go higher up the chain to see if we can get some more different response.
I would. This came up a little bit at a NEAC meeting, the fact that 395 is a major freight route, and they have concerns about impeding or slowing down the, the transportation of freight, movement of freight. And it was talked about doing some improvements, and that was only in a comment passing at a NEAC meeting. And then I met separately with, well, when Monty was still there, now with Craig Sip, about any improvements at the intersection of 395 and, and Ott and 395 and Airport. That didn't go very far. So I, that's going to be quite a hurdle, I'm afraid.
Maybe they'd like a roundabout.
Right outside of the Walmart distribution center. I bet they'd love that.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I know that there has been significant conversation around it. I just don't know where they're at with that, but there is talk of putting traffic control devices out there at some point.
But isn't that surrounding Ranch and Home?
Yeah.
The, the Trucking Association is going to be weighing in very heavily on that, I'm sure. So, all right, guys, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to address the Sunridge?
Oh, Sunridge. While, while you're here, I want us to skip down to item number eight, Sunridge Systems Payable, and that is our standard contract.
Annual renewal. Is the annual renewal for the software maintenance license?
Our annual renewal for maintenance. The only thing, you know, I think somewhere in there it says for dispatch software maintenance, and that is much broader because it's not just the dispatch software. It's what the, all the police agencies use as well, so it's that total package. All the user agencies that are in, in the system pays into a reserve account where these funds are paid from and support this.
And this is the software for the 911 program in general?
And the police reporting and stuff like that.
Right. And we had a bunch of hiccups in that a number of years ago. Did that kind of get, when we made the changeover?
I, you know, sometimes you want to be political on certain things, but I would say that their customer service isn't at a level where I would like to see it at, but at the same time, it's, they, they do come out with frequent updates to the system to try to benefit all the users.
Okay.
And so we'll see where it actually is. We haven't had some of the major catastrophes that we once did. We, we did some drilling and really taxi the system and learned why we were having some freeze-ups and things like that. That was, you know, root cause was with the program itself, and so they were getting some adjustments there and just up to a level where we're not freezing up and locking up stations when we're in the middle of a major emergency, so.
Terry, on a, on a scale of zero to 10, what's your satisfaction level with them? 10 being wonderful, 0 being not?
I would say probably in the middle. You know, it's got some really great aspects to it, the police reporting, and that was one of the, the selling factors for us to begin with, was that with the old program on the lease report writing side, it was so notorious that, that our deputies and the police officers were more like data entry clerks than just simply get in there and get their report done and get it submitted. But the old system had, you know, higher quality of dispatching capabilities. And so now it seems to have flip-flopped. The report writing is, is great with this system. Officers are able to get in and get their stuff done. The dispatch is still kind of weighing behind. Where we've got agencies, particularly the West, Umatella County Fire District wanting to do unit recommendations, so where, you know, if they, depending on call type, a fire, ambulance, wherever the case may be, they want to go in there and make unit recommendations so those, the recommended resources are automatically dispatched. And so I think where we're at right now is trying to develop that. And so with three stations over there, actually four stations over there, including Stanville, it's kind of difficult because you have to go in and set all this mapping up and say, and designate different areas. And then within each of those areas, you have to designate what units are to be dispatched, et cetera. So it's going to be a work in progress, and it has been a work in progress for the last year. But, you know, customers are, are asking for this, and we're trying to get there. But at the same time, what I'm telling our dispatch administration is, and these different agencies, is we want to be consistent across the board. And so I don't want a dispatcher in the heat of, of an emergency to have to pull out a book to determine what units to dispatch, et cetera. And so if we can streamline that process so we know that we're getting the right units out there, the right resources to respond, that's where the goal is, is to get to that area.
Well, I just know that from time to time, their customer support has been lacking, non-supportive. And I just want you to know, as you're negotiating those, if you need some additional weight from the Board of Commissioners, to be sure, be sure and seek it.
Sure will.
Terry, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? I would, I would move approval of the payable in the amount of $55,397 to Sunridge Systems Incorporated.
Second. Second, that we pay, do the payable for the amount of $55,000.
$397.
$397 to Sunridge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oregon Business Plan, Site Certificate Transfer. Tamara, do you have both of those?
Good morning. Tamara Mabbett, County Planning Director. So the first item is a project from Colo. Can't remember exactly what Colo stands for. It's Columbia River Logistics. It's a business that's located at the Port of Umatilla, and they had filed with the State of Oregon, Business Oregon, for a tax incentive program called Oregon Investment Advantage, and that's administered by Art Fish from Business Oregon. The way that process works, it's a little unusual, they send a notice and provide an opportunity for a local government to object, if they want to object, and objection would be based on some conflict with other businesses. So this is my first time working through this, so I've consulted several times with my liaison commissioner. It's located in the port, and actually the property is in the urban growth area, so I confirmed with the city it's been permitted, et cetera. The business is expanding to add another line of dairy feed, so it's mixing products, et cetera. The nice thing about this tax incentive is it is a, an income tax benefit, so it really doesn't compete with any local revenue sources for the county. The, I have gone ahead and said that the county does not object, but Art Fish asked for some formal ratification to that effect.
Paul, this may be a question for you, and this is just history. And you said, Tamara, you were a little new to this Columbia Colo. Am I remembering right, Colo was negotiating with the port a number of years ago on two buildings for this very, and they did not do one of the buildings for some reason?
They did both buildings. This was a, this was a byproduct of Enterprise Zone stuff at one time, and Commissioner Fuzi, or Mr. Port Authority, Fuzi, was very much in favor of giving them the extended abatement, which we did on one of the two buildings, and then we found out through some dialogue that they were using some prison labor internally for some of their workforce. That wasn't part of their full staffing considerations, and that created a little bit of heartache, I think, from some people's perspective, but this, I don't believe, has anything to do with prison labor per se. These are FTEs that they're adding in the midst of this. So they, it was SJR, it's SJR Colo. They have two facilities, and they have a mixed plant up on top.
Right.
Receive Enterprise Zone benefit. All of the Enterprise Zone benefit for SJR Colo is done now.
Okay.
So all of it is on the tax base, and as Tamara alluded to, this is just an income tax purpose for additional employees.
Okay. Thank you. So now you know more than we know on that.
And this Oregon Investment Advantage is not available universally throughout Oregon. Umatilla County happens to be on the list, so based on income level and unemployment. And even if we move out of that, that list to qualify for OIA or a business to qualify, that business would continue the benefit.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we give our support to the Colo project, to the Oregon Investment Advantage, for the Oregon Investment Advantage incentive, and send a correspondence to Arthur Fish, the Business Incentives, Business Oregon. It's a little long.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we give the support for that. Any further questions?
One additional comment, there have been no reported complaints about odor.
Correct.
Which is plaguing Stanfield on a similar issue at this point, and a whole different process, but.
Your motion in the second was that we send a letter of support.
Yes.
Do you want that to come from the chair or the whole board? Right now, it's from the chair.
I think chair is probably adequate.
Okay. All right. You have another site certificate.
If it's coming, if it's coming, if we vote, it comes from the board, does it not?
Yes.
Yeah, doesn't matter to me.
We can all sign it, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, we don't have to sign it, but it comes on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
Did we vote on that?
No.
Okay. So it will be sent in support of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Wheatland.
Wheat Ridge.
Wheat Ridge is the next one, right?
I'm thinking Wheatland Bakery.
And Wheatland, maybe you're hungry. So this is a, was a notice received from the Energy Facility Siting Council, the Wheat Ridge Energy Generation Project located in both Umatilla and Morrow County, the vast majority of Morrow County. The scope of the notice was limited to the transfer of ownership, so it previously was Jerry Reitman and an LLC, and it has been sold and transferred to Next Era Energy Resources LLC. And in this capacity, the board serves both as the Board of Commissioners and a special advisory group. So the letter that was submitted by the deadline, which was last week, just says that the county does not have an objection to that.
The majority of this project is in Morrow County.
Correct.
And so our exposure to it's pretty limited. Morrow County, I understood, had public hearings on this, on the transfer?
I don't know.
I know, I see the comment here, the board may wish to provide an opportunity for public comment. I'm not, I think we've had that already.
I know that I think we've had it already, but Next Era and Allo Resources have been extremely forthright in meeting with us on several occasions regarding this, plus we've gone through all the other stuff related to its location. So I would move whatever we need to move.
I cannot remember, but early on, the Wheat Ridge project, we had quite a flap about the connecting, connection line. Have they clarified it?
No, sir, they have not. And remember, that is the issue that EFSEC, that we disagreed with EFSEC on.
Right.
And that is not the scope of this, and we have not held a public hearing about this specific item. Certainly, we've had hearings about.
About the project.
About the project.
Yeah, that's what I intended.
The transfer of the certificate has nothing to do with that, but I was just curious, are we still in the dark where they're going to put their transmission line?
Formally, yes. Informally, I know they're working on some, on an option in Morrow County, but they haven't taken off the table a transmission line in Umatilla County, and that would be, come to the Planning Commission for an application.
All right. Is there, did you make?
I make a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Tammy, the other Tammy.
Dale's traveling a couple of days. He's wearing his juvie hat today, so he sent me here to, what, Community Corrections is in the need to deliver, to hire a couple PO techs to deliver our COGS intervention services to the clients on supervision. So Lip Sync, through the Justice Reinvestment, is recommend, has a recommendation that we hire two PO techs. One tech would be paid out of the regular community correction budget, and one tech would be paid out of the justice reinvestment. Justice Reinvestment money isn't going to be in for a two or three months, but we have enough money in our contingency in 1527, so if we needed to transfer money in the interim, we would like to go ahead and post for these positions and get these positions hired as soon as possible.
And this is all through the Justice Investment Fund, so.
But this is all part of the long-term discussion, is it not, from some sort of post-drug court and reorganization and?
So this is all the changes from no drug court, no A and D. So this is kind of the way that they're redistributing the services that we would give, and like I said, Lip Sync is requesting, or recommends that we actually hire Community Corrections employees to just, to deliver the actual COG services. And then, of course, the rest, the A and D services are referred out.
Right. I've been involved because it crosses boundaries between A and D and this, and have been, and Susan McHenry's been involved, very deeply involved, is Chair of Lip Sync, and I've been involved, so I'm, I would move we approve this.
I would second.
Been moved and seconded that we go with the, or approve the recommendation.
To make it clear that it's, there's no impact on the general fund here.
No, no, but, but they've been excellent about the communication.
Absolutely.
With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And the last item is the Downtown Payable, Downtown Association Payable.
Well, we pledged, last year, we pledged $20,000 to the Downtown Project from the Community Development Fund. We paid $10,000 last year, even though we mentioned the 20, I was advised by our CFO that we had not taken formal action relative to the second $10,000, so we need to get that, we need, we probably wouldn't have sent it this early, except that the fence ostensibly is going to go up by roundup, but we're waiting for the Union Pacific Railroad, so I would move that we approve this payable.
Is there a second? Second. Been moved and seconded that we do the payable for the Pendleton Downtown Association, and the amount is $10,000.
$10,000.
$10,000. This is the second installment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Do we have an executive session scheduled that we need to? So we will not be doing the executive session. We will have commissioners' reports, but before we do that, did you have anything? We have one member of the public here.
Senator.
All right. Very good, thank you. Commissioners' reports. Bill?
Well, it's, it's been interesting getting back into the saddle after the month of July, which I think had a total of about seven days in the whole month here. It's, and it's a bit, again, like drinking from a fire hose, as things have happened and things go on, but nothing beyond the excitement of a lot of, there are economic development projects that are coming forth that are requiring quite a bit of time, and, but they are moving, and I think we, we're in for an exciting four or five years.
Okay, George?
Most of what I've been involved in isn't particularly public of late, legal matters on behalf of the county, but I certainly did enjoy the commitment that 14 of the 15 members of the Board of Eastern Oregon University were all in Pendleton last night, making it clear they, they value their partnership with, with Umatilla County and want to expand it, and pointed out that there's 300 students from EOU here, they want to increase that number, and they really want to have partnerships. I, you weren't there for the, the speech part.
No, I missed that.
From Tom Ensco, who's the president and very, very much business-oriented, indicated they want to have continued conversations with, with the community in general relative to how EOU can provide meaning to their students in terms of what they will do post-graduation. He said there's kind of a lapse now that they, they obviously go to college and major in something, but there isn't much conversation or connection between the university experience and where they might be engaged in Eastern Oregon as far as post-graduation. Is that a fair representation?
Yes. Very, very clear.
I had a discussion with him directly about the, the cooperation and the collaboration between they and Blue Mountain, and how they really value Blue Mountain. I made a comment that Cam Price had told me that the first class of data technicians, the data science class that they provide, data technician science class they provide through the Boardman Center, that they've graduated their first class, and every single one of them had a, had an immediate offer. So, and he says, yeah, he says that, and we want to support that, he said, we would like to see that type of thing continue through Blue Mountain.
Yeah, because.
Precision egg.
Well, major employers that we have talked to who are interested in our county have indicated that it isn't just technical degrees they're looking at. As this grows out, they're going to need bachelor-level graduates as well.
Yeah. Okay. Just an update, and I'll do that, I'll start with, I'll be leaving here this afternoon to attend the Walla Walla Valley Metropolitan Planning Association meeting in Walla Walla. Of course, we're involved in that. We will be having in August the 17th and 18th, just prior to the CLIPS event, we'll be having the Oregon Transportation Commission and NEAC Joint Meeting in Enterprise on August 17th and 18th. And of course, I'm involved with that, so I'll have to be over there. Then, so that, you know, as Commissioner Alfredine and I attended the NACO conference, the committee that I sit on, the Energy, Environment, and Land Use, and as a NACO board member, there were three resolutions passed that directly affect Umatilla County, and I carried two of those. So NACO will be lobbying, and in no specific order, they'll be lobbying for the support of infrastructure built out for the liquid natural gas pipeline going from Colorado across the country to Coos Bay, Oregon. And that will enable the Port of Coos Bay to export liquid natural gas. That, that will be huge. Of course, that's a lobby effort, that isn't, we're going to do this. It gives NACO, the National Association of Counties, the ability to lobby that on Capitol Hill. Now, we passed that in the EELU Steering Committee, and that came to the NACO Board, and we, we passed those resolutions. There were a total of 11, we passed all of them. A number of them will support, supportive of the State of Oregon and Umatilla County and all the other counties. The second one had to do with woody biomass, and that was for NACO to support lobby efforts to increase the use of woody biomass in the Forest Service and BLM land planning, to reduce ladder fuels and fuel buildup, and enhance productivity of our natural resource environment in, in our timber and range land, that allowing that woody biomass to be used for production of energy going forward into the future. And the other one that I carried was the materials preference lobby effort, lobbying, again, Congress to not do a bill that would require the federal government to dictate to counties and communities what materials they have to use in repair and building of water infrastructure, be it wastewater, sewage, those types of things. And it was wastewater, it wasn't potable water. And this was due to the fact that a lot of communities, the engineers and the staff of those communities be. of those communities, be it county or cities, know and understand what their areas need as far as that infrastructure build-out, and what those areas can actually withstand. Is it better to use plastic pipe? Is it better to use steel pipe? What types of routes? And this would enable NACO to lobby Congress to not allow the federal government to have the total jurisdiction over what those communities would need. And this actually was called a local control effort on the part of NACO for counties. So those were some pretty important issues that we dealt with. We had had rumored that during the, the annual business meeting, that there would be a lobby group fighting the material preference resolution that we passed, but they, they did not come forward. So all of the resolutions passed out of our committee.
I can honestly say I wish my committee meeting had been that exciting.
EELU is the most contentious, most unusual committee, and they have the most issues brought before them, because it deals with energy, it deals with land use, deals with environment, and you have a lot of different opinions being expressed. Real quickly on the.
Back to NACO, just so you know, when you said there were no Oregon appointments. Yes. I was reappointed.
Oh, you were, they didn't have your name up there?
Well, like, that's because I wasn't there, they didn't see any need.
Oh, okay. All right.
No, I don't know about that, but.
You were reappointed to the Vice Chair of?
Human Services and Education.
Okay.
Mark Molehill's presentation back there was very well received.
Good.
Very well received.
Was there a decent crowd? There was.
Yes.
Oh, good.
And also, the county, one of, our county, one of three in Oregon, Umatilla, Wasco County, and Clackamas County, we didn't go up to, they didn't present an award on the, on stage.
But recognition.
But we were given recognition in the program. It was a pretty thick program. I will say this, the State of California, the number of counties that had recognition, there were eight pages.
Of California.
Of California counties. Eight pages that got recognition. However, Wasco County, Umatilla County, and Clackamas County were the three number-one counties in Oregon. So we're proud of that.
I think it might, might be nice if the commissioners sent a formal letter of thank you to Mark, so that his board is aware of the fact he's did that, spoke on behalf. Because I think, I think there was, if there may have been one other Oregon presentation, but I don't think there was much on that program from Oregon besides.
And I think a letter of appreciation to Susan for going back and being available and present during that. Would you be willing to pin those?
Yeah, if you'll sign them.
Oh, sure.
I'd rather you sign it, it's going to make more, it'll mean more to the ESE Board if you sign it.
Okay. I thought maybe your friendship with Mark would, he'd rather have you sign it.
Well, it would dilute the.
And then the, the last item, and this is more for information, AOC is, is going through, and I will not be able to attend the Executive Board Retreat next week. You will do that next Sunday and Monday. We are changing a number of staff. AOC is downsizing. And I learned just this morning, and, and this was not one of the planned changes, but Emily Acklin has resigned, and she will be moving to, she's taking a job in her former hometown area, Travis County, Texas, which is the Austin area. So.
Gil is retiring. Gil.
Gil, yes.
So then won't be replaced.
Gil is retiring. They're going to switch his duties. I'm not sure if Andy is.
I think Andy is going to be assigned that.
He'll, he'll take that.
I checked, to make sure they're keeping Andy, and they are.
There are four people that will be.
Stacy is going.
Yeah. Stacy, Mark Nystrom. I, I don't want to mention any, I don't know.
I don't know what's going to happen to Health and Human Services. But I have formally submitted my resignation.
From that committee?
From all of those. Because of the Rotary, because the Rotary meets on Monday, and so I have no interest in going to sail them on Mondays.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had. Other comments?
I don't think we have to take action, but do know that we do have an event here on the morning of the eclipse.
Yes.
We're going to the roof for sun tea, sunships, and moon pies.
Great.
So there'll be a brief interlude in our day while we go up and watch.
Your staff will hit the roof.
Yeah. Okay. Robert, anything? All right. And again, member of the public? All right. We are adjourned.